Good evening. I want to welcome everyone tonight to the City Council Workshop for July 24th, 19 -- or excuse me, it's 19 -- I was going to say 1900s, 2017. First off, I'd like to look for our motion to excuse Mayor Williams for this evening's workshop. Mr. Jones?
I move to excuse Mayor Williams from tonight's workshop.
Motion's to approve Mr. Williams, and that has passed 6 to 0 with Mr. Williams' absence. So we'll go ahead and kick off, excuse me, kick off the workshop with our VADA Hospitality, our VADA Events Master Plan. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, and members of the council. We have an update on the our VADA Hospitality and our VADA Events Master Plan, and Gordon Rusick will start that presentation.
Good evening, Gordon.
Good evening. Mayor Pro Tem Pfeiffer and members of City Council, this was actually the first of a number of workshops leading up to a City Council Strategic Result that talks about completing an internal review of the Arvada Center Master Plan, recommend revisions, and develop an implementation plan based on changes to the Arvada Center Governance Structure, Hospitality Master Plan, and other relevant documents. Tonight's presentation, though, really focuses on what our VADA Hospitality does, and so we're going to start with that.
Mr. Archer, you said we were ready. Oh.
of why hospitality in our VADA events was first created, an overview of the facilities that it manages, how its performance is measured and reported, and other issues regarding current and future operations. At a yet unscheduled council workshop, there'll be specific focus on the study that was completed by RevPAR International, and that's to complete the conversation, and it really studied the market for our VADA hospitality and the our VADA market in general. It completed a market analysis, a financial feasibility analysis, and economic impact analysis. But tonight, the focus is on our VADA hospitality and really where it came from. So the goal of tonight is to have a grounding in both the City Council and the departmental strategic result, referring to this item, to look at what we do and how we do it, to really tell the story over a 25-year timeframe. Our VADA hospitality and our VADA events is celebrating its 25th anniversary this year, to go through our performance metrics, and then spend a brief moment laying the groundwork for the follow-up council workshop. So as mentioned in the outset, the City Council has a strategic result that talks about doing an internal review of the our VADA Center Master Plan that's grounded in the governance structure, changes, what the existing our VADA Center Master Plan refers to regarding hospitality, as well as other relevant documents. As a companion to that council strategic result, we have a department strategic result that parallels that, that by the end of this year, we would have an updated strategic plan on how we deliver hospitality services to the our VADA community, and that that plan would have as basis the updated assumptions produced in the market analysis, financial feasibility, and economic impact analysis that was prepared by RevPAR International. So taking a step forward, who are we? Our VADA Events is a line of business within the Department of Parks, Golf, and Hospitality. Our VADA Events operates in two city enterprise funds, both golf and hospitality, and it's specifically charged with programming and managing the hospitality spaces at a number of city-owned facilities throughout the community, the six that are listed on the screen. So the our VADA Center, golf course restaurants, and throughout the city's sports complexes. As we all know, an enterprise fund is a separate set of financial records that are really premised on capturing the fees and expenses associated with a program that closely mirrors a private business operation. So the revenues generated by the customers of our VADA Events fund its ongoing operations. Our secret over the years has been to maintain a centralized management, sales, and financial oversight approach, so one group of people using the centralized approach can reserve space at any of the city facilities, manage the central financial administration, and ensure that the kitchen operations are managed in such a way to achieve full operational efficiencies and avoid any duplication of service. And we're fortunate tonight that our VADA Events has turned 25 years old this year, and we still have the first gentleman, our employee number one, who began with the city 25 years ago, our bank, our general manager, Rick Diaz. And you'll also see other members of the our VADA Events team in the audience tonight. We have our Director of Catering, Barbara Sadler. We have our Executive Chef, Todd Story, and we have Steve Snellbaker, our Westwoods Golf Course Restaurant Manager, all present. And then in terms of our financial administration, our Business Analyst Natasha Galston is present And to really understand where, what our VADA Events is today means that we have to take a quick step back in time to a time when our VADA wasn't like it was today, into the early 90s where our roots began. And the theme that created our VADA Events really dates back to a community in the early 1990s and earlier than that that had very limited access to hospitality venues. There was the Townhouse Motel on Wadsworth Bypass, and the other place in the community that could house any size group was Bernard's of our VADA, which was at 53rd and Wadsworth. Those really were the two main places. Even then, if the city needed to host an event, an employee gathering of a certain kind, we had to leave the city and go to the Aviation Club in the city of Lakewood. So armed with a dearth of offerings, beginning in the early 90s, a community conversation happened regarding hospitality and what the community really wanted for itself, first as a city of 89,000, but then knowing that we were also growing, the city that we know today and into the future, and what kind of hospitality venues were really needed to sustain that vision. In our case, our roots go back to an initiated ordinance that happened in 1991, when voters were asked to either approve or disapprove an ordinance that would allow the city to expend money on a number of road projects, expansion of City Hall, and the expansion of the our VADA Center. And the way the initiated ordinance was worded, if you voted against the ordinance, it meant you supported the expansion of City Hall and the our VADA Center. Buried deep within, not that deep, but in the conversation regarding the our VADA Center for the arts expansion, was the concept of adding an amphitheater, as well as building the space that our VADA Events operates in today, community space that offered banquets and seating so our VADans didn't have to leave our VADA any longer for those services. And so for that reason, in 1992, the our VADA Center banquet and conference operation opened and is celebrating its 25th anniversary. And as we go through the 25 years of its history in a number of PowerPoint slides, a couple years later, Westwoods was built, and a couple years after that, the private room at Westwoods opened. About four years after that, Lake Arbor Golf Course and the clubhouse was remodeled and the restaurant expanded, and that became the centralized operation that we know of as today with the two golf course restaurants and operations at the our VADA Center. The next year, we added the concession concessions at Stanger. And then on the anniversary of the our VADA Center's 25th anniversary, everyone paused and worked on a new master plan that would guide the center and its growth through the years. And the premise of the our VADA Center Master Plan was to really look at the fact that we, dating back to 1991, created something that had two missions under the same roof. And acknowledging that 10 years later, your VADA Center Master Plan talked about the need to develop a master plan that spoke about the need to expand arts and culture programs, but also, as well as adding space for expanded hospitality operations. As you go through the comments and in the document itself, there is that strong recognition that, beginning in 1991, we were really two missions under the same roof. And the conclusions reached in that were that, in that master plan, were that the center was sufficiently or significantly deficit in a number of areas to support program and other support space, and there was a recognition that that should be expanded. And it was also premised about adding to the banquet and conferencing program. And as, as you read that entire master plan, it boils down to talking about adding that the single most effective thing would be to move the banquet and conference wing and backfill the space to allow our VADA Center arts and programs to expand. A few years later, we did not fully implement the recommendations of that master plan, but a significant expansion happened in 2005. We created the our VADA history and some of, some of the things that we know today as part of that expansion, and at the same time, we created Ballroom E. And as you read through the policy documents about why the hospitality spaces were expanded, it really was to hold and to expand the share of banquet and conference services in the northwest area. We were desperate at that time to have two spaces where we could have a number of larger events held simultaneously, and we wanted to create pre-function space and relieve the pressure in the Galleria area of the our VADA Center. And that concept, that last update to the building footprint in 2005, has really been the last time we've looked at expansion at the our VADA Center. But the other change that happened, beginning in 2013, was an examination of the governance structure and that recognition of two missions under the same roof. A couple of years ago, the cooperative agreement was signed between the city and the nonprofit foundation, and there's really three specific things in the agreement that relate to our VADA hospitality, our VADA Events operations. One had to do with concessions and who took the lead in providing them. Beginning of last year, on July 1st, the Foundation Board took over that function and now operates concessions. There was also a recognition that we did need a long-term strategy to look at relocating hospitality services to another community venue, as well as, while looking at that, a recognition that until we had kind of that vision defined, we would operate kind of under the status quo until a plan to relocate that function was completed. As time moves on, though, we continue, our VADA Events continues to move on. We began concession services at Lake, at Lake, excuse me, Long Lake Regional Park in 2014. We transferred the concessions in 2016. We're celebrating the 25th anniversary in '17. We'll be opening the new Westwoods Clubhouse, an expanded restaurant, in 2018, and we'll also be providing service at the newly completed Lutz Sports Complex next year. So over that 25-year history, our VADA Events has changed a lot. We've grown from a city of 89,000 to a city of almost 117,000, and that debate about one mission under the same roof, what is the level of hospitality services we should be providing, has been kind of a constant throughout that time also. Regarding how we measure our performance, we have a strategic plan now that we're updating, but it's really premised on just three or four important things. The first thing is to maintain conference and banquet services that provide high-quality food, beverage, meeting, and event services, and we know that we've achieved that as we look at our focus measures and our performance. In 2016, we hosted almost 550 events, our VADA Events did, and served almost 180,000 guests. We survey every client, and in 2016, the comment cards and surveys that we received back showed, indicated that 97% of those surveyed agreed or strongly agreed that their events had a personalized touch and were enjoyable and, bottom line, met the customer's needs. In terms of who our customers are, there's two ways to measure that. The first is to use a very traditional segmentation report. Most of our business in our VADA Events comes from corporate bookings and nonprofit associations. We serve a number of other groups. Nonprofits are very important to us in the city to support the nonprofit community. But as you look through the 549, 550 events, you'll see that the majority of them are really corporate or nonprofit-related. Last year, business with the our VADA Center, just, just looking at the our VADA Center, comprised about 2% of all of the activities that our VADA Events was associated with. Another way of looking at that last measure is to also look at who we serve and which community, and 42% of all of the business in our VADA Events is with the our VADA community itself. Once that 42% of events goes away, Denver's the leading place where people look to make a booking from, and following that is the city of Lakewood. We also look at whether or not we're meeting our performance measures to see if we operate programs that serve as, as a job creator, a sales tax generator, and whether or not, over the years, we were able to transfer money from the our VADA Hospitality Fund to the our VADA Center Fund to, in order to help with arts and culture programming. And as we drill down into those metrics, when you look at the full-time staff, many of whom are here tonight, and the many people that comprise our non-benefited staff, when you put all of that time together and divide it into a full-time equivalence, it's 48 full-time equivalents, employees that are employed by our VADA Events. In terms of generating sales tax, the events that we sponsor do that in a great way, and $165,000 in 2016 were generated in state and local sales tax. Another way that we look at whether or not we're meeting our financial goals is whether or not we meet the city's financial goal for the fund, and that goal was exceeded in 2016. And then that last measure, whether or not our VADA hospitality is a help to the our VADA Center Fund, is looked at between '98 and 2013, much of the net income each year was transferred to the our VADA Center Fund to help fund those arts and culture programs. And where we are today really is our last objective, the focus of our department strategic result, and it really talks about making sure that we have a master plan that provides long-term financial sustainability for our ongoing operations and a coherent capital improvement plan that ties our growth to the increasing demands within our VADA and the northwest market area. And that's really the groundwork that the RevPAR International Study develops that we'll be presenting at the next council workshop. As I mentioned, this is, this report really focuses on the issues impacting the northwest market for hospitality venues today and as the area grows, and really offers at least one vision of what those services might look like to serve that growing market. And with that in mind, I wanted to ask if there are any questions about what we do, where we've come from, and the importance of the next study when it's presented that will help to find where we might go in the future.
And we do. Mr. Marion?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a variety of questions in no particular order. So I have a question for you. You know, it seems like our VADA hospitality or our VADA events was started because at one time, there was no kind of adequate meeting space in our VADA, and whether it was service clubs or the city itself was having to go outside the city to meet. Is that still the case today, or do you feel like there, is there adequate meeting space in city of our VADA, not including the our VADA venues?
My opinion would be that for our VADA Events to support the rest of the depart, the City Council strategic results about job creation and expansion of our business base, as well as offer the services that a growing community needs, and it's more fully developed in the RevPAR International Study, that it's needed, it was needed then, it's needed today, and it would be needed in the future.
Okay. I can picture some of the smaller venues that now exist that didn't exist then, the new Hilton Garden Inn, ironically very near where the old motel was, it had event space. Has, has event space, the Lamar Center does. I've been to meetings and events at the Community First Foundation, the Apex Fieldhouse. It seems like there's a number of them now that didn't exist back then. Is that true?
It is true. Some have come and some have gone, and event space like that is very much like restaurants, where it, for the consumer standpoint, it's really good to have a choice. And so now we've had the best choice in our VADA for a very long time, different price points. Each, each of the properties that you mentioned helps serve a need and a particular area of the market, but it's a growing market, and so choice is good and, and it's something, our overall goal is to never have anyone leave our VADA. So when, when we're booked and don't have space, we do referrals and vice versa. We've set up meetings with the Hilton to support them and to lay the groundwork for being able to do multiple-day events, conferences and all in the city to expand that. So it's, it's a good thing to have more than just a couple.
Yeah. Well, and that brings up kind of a, another question, with that being kind of a governmental enterprise with our VADA Events or hospitality being that, how, how do we price that compared to the private sector? Do we look to the private sector and try to follow their pricing, or do, do we set the pricing in, in this area by virtue of the amount of space we have, and they have to follow us, or how exactly does that happen where that gets priced?
It's both. We complete annually a market analysis of the pricing of all of the other venues. Then we look to see where, where we are, and we don't try to be the market leader, and we certainly don't want to be the, the last one in the market either. Our goal is to be efficiently priced, especially for the nonprofits. And that's why, when you look at the, our segment for nonprofits and how strong that is, it's because as they look around other venues, we're a very, we deliver a lot on the prices that are charged.
Okay. One other question. At the our VADA Center in its largest configuration, how, how many people can it host at an event? Kind of a luncheon-type event or whatever?
I believe the largest we can hold in a, kind of a theater seating is about 800.
Okay. And, and is there any other spaces around within the city of our VADA operated by the private sector that, that come anywhere close to that? What's, what's the next biggest, you know, kind of venue?
I think a, a LeBarre Street Station, and I think that's right at 200. Theater-style, it would be about 400 at the LeBarre Street Station.
400, okay. So, so it is at least providing something that, that's not, that's not there. Of the business that, that we do with our hospitality, it seems like we have three venues, the our VADA Center and each of the two golf courses. Do you know whether it's in either number of events or, or in dollars probably makes more sense?
Sure.
Where, where that, where that falls between those three?
Sure. Our, our earned income last year was just over $2.8 million, and it was split almost equally. 51% came from the golf course operations and 49% from the our VADA Center.
From the our VADA Center, okay. And so I know there, another question, how many benefited employees then does our VADA Events have? I know you said there's 48 FTE equivalents, but some of those are part-time or?
Nine benefited employees.
Nine benefited, okay. And then, so the equivalent of about 39 or something like that, non-benefited or full FTE equivalents with all the other people put together? Okay. One other thing that I've seen in other places where golf courses or other facilities will essentially contract out those services or make the, make the restaurant venue available to a private contractor to lease and then provide that service. Have we ever looked at that as any of this planning, you know, has that ever been kind of one of the scenarios that's at least compared or contemplated within an analysis?
I would say that that question is asked at least once a year over the 25 years that the city's been in this, and the way it's been analyzed is to really look at what it means to privatize an operation, what you might give up in terms of golf staff and restaurant staff being on the same page and working together, what you might lose in terms of the ability to share revenue. And in terms of full disclosure, the very first roots before the city made a decision to take, to take on hospitality and this business itself, an RFP was issued seeking a private partner to operate this space at the our VADA Center. And as that process unfolded, there was only one proposal that was received, and it basically said that they would take over operations if we would pay for all of their smallwares, all of their ongoing costs of custodial and all of those expenses, and then paid them an annual fee to manage the property. And then it had a very, very high revenue level where revenue sharing would finally begin. But what you describe as far as concessionaires working with cities and all, happens in Westminster and it happens in the city of Golden, and it is one model that's out there. In talking to those cities and our colleagues, we really feel that the model that we have where decisions can be made and we have the same staff under the same roof and the same span of control of all is a preferable one.
Okay. Well, I would hope that periodically we at least compare the scenarios, you know, I understand that at the time, the path that was chosen might have been the appropriate one then, but I mean, I would hope we would just at least take a look at that periodically. One last thing, and that's the, the new clubhouse at Westwoods. How about how big of a venue is that going to be, and do you anticipate operational changes there that will kind of maybe move some of the business from the our VADA Center to that, or?
So the goal with that, because we ended up with option A of the five different choices, and option A was really to give us the clubhouse that we need for a 27-hole golf course. So it didn't expand banquet space. It basically took what we had in the private room and slightly reconfigured it. It added a golfer's porch that could seat a tournament of 120 people and allow the expanded restaurant to stay open at the same time. But we didn't create a bigger mission for, for But we didn't create a, a bigger mission for, for it as far as banquet space.
So the anticipation is that it'll operate the way it has operated up to now?
Yeah, and, and the benefits of it is we'll be able to keep the restaurant open while we host a tournament and, and do the things we've never been able to do.
Right, okay. And then, and then one last question. I see, you know, members of the Arvada Center Board seated behind you. Have we had discussions with them about them doing the hospitality at the Arvada Center as opposed to us doing it? And, and I, I know in your slides it shows that, that, that one of the successes we've had is that the events have generated money that, that goes to the operations of the Arvada Center. It looks like it's $80,000 or $90,000 a year kind of on average that gets generated. Is there any efficiencies to be had, or does the Arvada Center prefer, or has there been kind of conversations around, rather than the city doing that, the, the Arvada Center doing that?
Councilmember Marion, I'll, I'll take a shot at answering that question with the understanding that, that there may be more additional, there may be additional conversations to be had on this subject. We actually discussed that as part of the negotiation process for the cooperative agreement, and at that time, we concluded that Arvada Events should continue to do Arvada Events and, and the Center should continue to focus, or should focus on arts and humanities programming. That may be something to, to revisit, but frankly, I think the, most of the discussions of late have been around if Arvada Events was going to be relocated, utilizing that space, converting it for programming for arts and humanities educational programs, and, and then the revenue that you talked about would be part of the net revenue that would help to support that particular operation.
Good. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Nancy Ford?
I just have to clarify, you said, you talked about the $80,000 or $90,000 revenue. Is that for all of hospitality, right? Not, not just the Arvada Center, but all of Arvada's events?
Between 1998 and 2013, the Arvada Hospitality Fund transferred annually, made a transfer to the Arvada Center Fund. When you look at the cumulative total over that time period, it's right about $1.3 million. We are no longer transferring money though.
And, and that was one of my questions. Where is the money going right now? Where, on, let's see. I just wanted to kind of look at my questions here. You have, go ahead, you can answer that.
It's staying in the Arvada Hospitality Fund, the city, the city enterprise fund.
Okay. Well, this is just a statement, and then I have a, a couple of questions. In terms of your feedback, I'd be very interested in seeing your measurement tool for getting that feedback. I just want to clarify, in terms of the type of events, fraternal, are we talking about Arvada, city of Arvada when we say fraternal?
Predominantly, yeah.
Okay. So I, I looked at, you know, you, you mentioned the nonprofits and the corporate, you, you didn't mention that we, I mean, we, we certainly require 70%, which is a large percentage is for the city, and then, you know, religious was up there as well as, now what is in-house?
That's service that's provided to other city departments.
Okay, so that, that doesn't include, that would not be categorized in the fraternal?
No, it would be events that we hold, for instance, the annual employee event that's held in December. That would be an example of one.
So give me an example of a fraternal event?
That would be any of the service clubs that would hold an event at the center.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so we're not talking about city of Arvada in the fraternal. We're talking about Kiwanis and?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Now, on the $165,000 in state and local taxes, where did that amount go? Was that in the general fund?
So we make two transfers. We pay our state taxes that are owed to the state of Colorado, and then we pay the city's finance department for sales taxes that are owed, and then we're subject to audit by both of the agencies.
But it goes into the general fund?
It is, it does, yes.
Okay. Okay, so I think, I have a question too. Have we ever, this is sort of off the profit portion, but have we ever looked at partnering with schools in our, like Johnson and Wales or the Culinary Institute?
We've done that. Currently, a couple of our staff members are on the, on the Metro State Advisory Board. They have a new, a relatively new conference and hospitality school as part of Metro State. They've always been really involved in professional association activities, and we've had a, in place a long-term internship program. One of the things that's always distinguished Arvada Events is we've tried to be an employer of choice when people get their very first job as an Arvada, an Arvada kid, getting their first job. And we really have a lot of pride in who we've hired and given their first job, and then what's happened after that, and how they've grown from that. And there's some, some amazing stories about who's come through in that partnering of education and, and support of our younger citizens.
And then in terms of the actual business, do we have a, a mission or purpose statement that sets the tone for the food that we serve, this, how we serve in terms of service, just like any other business?
We do, yeah. And I'd be glad to send that to you. When we did our updated strategic plans, the city's comes first, then every department has one for which our department stands, and then every line of business within that department has its own, and I'd be happy to share the one that Arvada Events has with you.
Okay, thanks. And then I'm assuming that at our next workshop, we'll, we'll really dive into it as we get the results from the RevPAR study.
Yes, and we'll be having our consultant do the, do the presentation for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
David Jones?
So several of my questions have already been asked and answered. I just want to follow up on the, the question with regard to our, our Vada Center Board and Executive Director here. I'm glad that they're here. And the, around the, the agreement that we have that maybe at some point in time, Arvada Events would exit the Arvada Center so that they would have full use of that facility. Where is that conversation going to happen? I should say, when is that conversation going to happen?
Actually, we view that as beginning tonight. I think part of the present, or purpose of tonight was to kind of set the groundwork as Gordon discussed and gave you the history and the background, particularly because not all of you were on council back when Arvada Events was established. And then the, the RevPAR marketing report will provide you with some additional information around the hospitality master plan, the various options that might be available for relocating hospitality. So that's a, that's, that, that will come next. And I think around those two discussions will be, you know, the, the understanding or the analysis of, of, of what's feasible to do at this, at the present time.
Okay, no, that's good. I, because I didn't, excuse me, necessarily see that, and I wondered if it was going to be a part of the next, so thank you for that clarification.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Rusink, for a very complete presentation. And I just want to call attention to the slide or the area of your presentation that has to do with the master plan from 2001. I did serve on that master plan committee, lots and lots of meetings, lots of time devoted to that, lots of discussion about various issues. And I'm just very happy to see that the two of the main points of that master plan are still there, and basically they both support the notion, the premise that the primary function of the Arvada Center is arts and humanities programming. And as the two conclusions that you quoted here, basically saying additional space is necessary for the programming that we want at the center, and that the most effective way to do that is to free up the space, build a new hospitality center. And so I'm just very happy that although many master plans wither and die on the shelf, this one is still alive and you're still paying some homage to the hard work that was done by a very large citizens committee at that time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McGough. I, Gordon, I have a few questions around your statistics on, you said you had 400, or excuse me, 549 events in 2016? What's the trend, say, the previous five years? Is it, what does it look like? Is it flatlined, increased 10%, decreased?
During the Great Recession, we dipped in two different ways. The first dip that we saw was for corporations where they pulled back, so we saw a dip that's more than recovered since then. And then following the heels of that, it was the impact of the recession on the nonprofit community, and so we saw that pullback. But we see since then, strong growth in, in those and increased numbers. And more importantly, or is important to all of that, a growing community, business community in north, in the northwest quadrant. And our consultant was able to really quantify that, that strength and what the, what their view of what the market is saying. And that's kind of a major part of the next presentation to go through numbers and trends and all of that.
Fair enough. And then, Mr. Jones asked my question, I was asking the same question about leaving the Arvada Center and what's next, but I guess that starts tonight. The Fox property, you know, that's been around for a while. I'd be interested in what we're going to do with the Fox property in the long run, and is that, is that within the discussions in the future as well?
It, it will be. You'll find when the consultants make their report that it was one of the properties that they studied for possible relocation.
I just don't want to lose sight of that property. And for those that don't know, the Fox property, it's the property that overlooks a majestic view, and it has a, I believe we own that property, right?
We do.
I think we can do some great things with that property right now. It's, I think it's just being taken care of, so. That's all the questions I have. The only thing I would like to add is for those ice sculptures there, I think that's Mr. Diaz that does all those ice sculptures. Oh, no, it's Todd.
It's both of them.
Oh, it's both of you. Wow, teamwork. Always been fascinating when you guys do that. You do a great job, so. There's not any other questions? Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we're taking a two-minute stand-up break. I'm only doing two minutes. All right, everybody, we're going to get going again. So next up, we have the city council tenure financial plan. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mayor Potem, members of the council, or Brian Archer's going to present our 10-year financial plan and then follow that up with a 10-year capital improvement plan. And I know that the 10-year financial plan is one of the most favorite things that you, that the city council receives as a presentation every year, and we, we hope you'll be as rapt attention as you always are.
Mayor Potem, council. As a segue, Gordon didn't announce that, but I did start my Arvada career working for the food service. So over 20 years ago, I am one of those employees that went on to do other things. So this presentation will look familiar to city council. We are trying to recognize that the city does have a two-year budget. We are in the second year of our two-year budget, and we are asked to come to city council and update you on what has happened since the last time we brought this presentation to you. So a quick schedule of events. Tonight, we'll show you the current tenure model, update you on changes, quickly run through what our current tenure CIP looks like. On September 18th, we're scheduled to present to you the city manager's recommended budget. We will review the pay plan. Jim will give his annual update to the different utility rates. And then hopefully on October 2nd, we will bring first reading of the budget and then adopt on the 16th. A quick overview, our models now run from 2018 through 2026, and tonight we'll look at in-depth the general fund parks and the tax increments, and then show updates on some other funds. This slide is the same as last year, just to remind city council, we do have these various items proposed throughout our model, what our market rate adjustments are, and that is our proposed changes to our pay plan, or what the market has moved since 2007, what our healthcare rates are proposed throughout the model. We did just finish a meeting with our provider, and we are pretty excited. We're kind of cautiously optimistic that maybe our healthcare renewal will be less than 6%. We're quite excited about that. Now that I said that, I'm a little worried that something's going to happen, but...
Brian, are those, are those amount of increases you anticipate?
That is correct, Councilmember Allard. And we did keep the Cadillac tax even though at this point in time, we're not really certain what's going to happen with that. We are taking the conservative approach and leaving that in, starting in 2020, and we did reduce our line items from 3% to a 1.5% annual increase. No changes on this slide from last year. We're still funding our various internal service funds at these rates. I know this slide is somewhat difficult to read, but I do want to focus on a couple of items. One where we sit today, so currently, the general fund has a surplus, and it has a surplus in each and every year. As we move throughout our model, that surplus ends up at a little more than $10 million over our fund balance goal of 17%. What you do not see in this model is any additional allocation to streets. That will be part of our proposal as we move forward in September. What we do not know is how much of that proposal, or how much that will be annually. Right now, we're looking at possibly about $950,000 to $1 million increase added to what we had before. If you remember, Mr. Devon had proposed a challenge to staff that we were going to try to get to 1.2 million in that change per year. We feel that we're going to get to about 1, and then we have some ideas about how we're going to get to that additional 200,000. So you can see we have a very healthy tenure model. Items in yellow are the changes that have been made since the last time council saw this presentation. You will see that we have updated sales tax. The biggest factor in that is internet sales. So if you remember before, we were proposing about a 1.5% increase from seven, in 2017. Internet sales added about 1.5% to that number, so that got us to 3. The robust economy has added the additional approximately 0.9 to 1%. So we're actually seeing about a 4% increase in sales tax for 2017. That's pretty exciting, and with the multiplier factor, that adds to the complete model in each and every year. We did push up 2018 and 2019, but then we went ahead and pulled back in 2020. We feel like our growth is happening today, and we're getting that growth now, but we're going to probably have to take a breath somewhere along the way, and the next couple of slides I'll explain to you why. Everything else on this slide is the same. One of the items that did change is the urban renewal did pay back the $2 million loan that we had made to them to acquire the Safeway property to allow for development over on Rolston Road. This is just an update to the sales tax growth that we shared with council last year. As you can see, we peaked in 2014 as an annual growth and have since slowed down each and every year. We did feel... each and every year. We did feel again that if, without internet sales, we would have seen that reduction show up in 2017. As you see, what we have done now is we went ahead and increased 17, kept 18 and 19 where it's at, and then brought 2020 down to what we feel like is a cyclical nature of growth in the economy. Then through the outer years, we kept it between two and a half and three percent. Are pretty much our long-term average. If city council remembers this slide, you see the two outlier years in 2006 and 2007. And again, that was the expiration of our first urban renewal area. And we got to bring all those sales tax revenues back to the city of Arvada, certainly helping us as we moved right into the Great Recession. Timing could not have been any better for us as an organization. We like to put this slide in as it shows the building activity. As you know, I come here every three months and talk about how building activity is going crazy in Arvada. Everybody knows that. This is a graphical representation of that. And you can see that we're starting to see more single-family attached and duplex properties as a percentage coming into the city. We are still predominantly a single-family detached community, but we are starting to see that infill growth helping to add to density. And 2017 is off to quite a good start. And here in a couple of weeks, we'll talk more about that. Same slide, just reflected on dollars. On the expenditure side, we did tighten our belt in the general fund in the goal to try to get more money to street maintenance. Through the great efforts of our building and public works area, we've been able to reduce even further our fuel usage and our electricity and gas in our utilities to the tune of about $100,000 per year. We have increased street maintenance. If you remember this slide from before, it showed approximately 6.1 million annually. We now sit at 8.6 million annually with a goal to get somewhere near 10 million. We have funded additional one-time dollars to street maintenance, $3 million. City council approved that in April. And we will be looking to do that again if and when we have one-time dollars in 2017. A few of the departments that offered cuts are listed in front of you. Economic Development, City Manager's Office, Finance and Public Works were able to generate approximately $215,000. City Manager's Office does want me to show that they were the one that was able to give back the most money. They are quite proud of that.
Is that saving, is that savings from not printing?
There is an item there.
That is part of it.
Actually, we could break that down further, but absolutely. And also taking a look at items anywhere from travel to expenditures related to support various functions. For example, in finance, one of our savings is related to not printing and sending out sales tax forms starting in January. That's about $25,000 of that 85. And so, little dollars, but as you add them up over time, they amount to something. This 215,000 is included in that $10 million that you see in the general fund. We have had and will have some positional changes since the 2017 approval. Some of these items were a necessity due to increases. For example, the passports position, we were just getting overrun in that area. We had to get a body in here. That is completely offset by passport revenue. We exchanged the code enforcement supervisor position for a planner one to help out with the building growth. The civil engineer one is related directly to the increased dollars put in for streets maintenance. For every two and a half million dollars or so added to street maintenance, we will need to add a position to help keep those dollars going out the door appropriately. We did add an additional civil engineer position related to development work and additional building revenue. Currently, a proposal is in the general fund to add back the chief probation officer. And this would be in exchange for the court security position that was eliminated earlier this year. You will see three positions that are not in yellow. Those are positions that Gordon just talked about. These are all related to Westwoods and the expansion. And they will be looking to hire these positions sometime in August or September to get them ready for the opening plan sometime in January. Any questions related to that?
I have a question. Does the food service at the golf clubs go to the food service, the revenue go to the food services and if it go to the golf club?
The, the food service dollars generated under the golf club or at the golf club stay with the golf club?
Nancy?
Just a question on the supervisor position. Excuse me, the court security position and the chief probation officer, is that a, a pretty equal exchange in terms of salary or?
The chief probation officer is a little bit more expensive, about $15,000 per year overall. And those dollars, we feel like can be offset through additional court revenues.
Can I just clarify something? When we say court revenues, we're referring to court costs. The court did raise court costs from $30 to $33, as well as a $2 surcharge. Those are the only things I consider revenues.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge. We now move to the parks fund. As you will see, the parks fund is sitting with a nice fund balance at the end of 10 years. This is directly related to the increased revenues from open space. So as the economy is doing well, open space revenues have grown. Parks Fund is doing a wonderful job controlling costs and will look to use those, that approximately 1.3 million dollars in the most strategic way. There, if you, two weeks ago, we brought to city council an approval to go out for a possible grant related to some trailways out west. The match was about 385,000. Mr. Devon mentioned that we did have a source for that. The source for that would be this parks fund. So if we are successful with that grant, we will use 350,000 or so out of this fund balance to fund that.
I have a question for you, Brian.
Sure.
Hey, when, it was a discussion with, I can't remember, maybe the school district in regards to park space and, you know, in lieu of a park dedicated land. What's the in lieu of? What, is there a percentage? How, how does that work?
There is a percentage on the calculation, and I don't know the specifics on that.
Yeah. Maybe if we can get that.
We, we get that information for you.
Yeah, just curious how that really worked. That question came up in one of our committee meetings, and we just didn't really have enough data to talk about that. But if we can know that, then I'd be interested in how much of the development has been actually given as park land versus in lieu of.
Okay.
It'd be interesting to know that.
Yeah, I know Gordon, his crew have that, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Go ahead, Nancy.
So I just want to clarify, Brian. When I was looking at this sheet and I was, you know, I wasn't looking at the fund balances, but I was just looking at rev, total revenue and expenditures. We're actually running a deficit, but it's our grants that make up that deficit. Is that what you're?
That is correct. Plus, the Parks Fund does a wonderful job of moving dollars around on the expenditure side and pretty much gets it to a break-even point each and every year.
And basically then, in terms of the grants, are we, do we generally get these grants all the time? They're pretty, you know, it's a pretty conservative estimate to say that we'll get them?
The majority of grants that are received in the Parks Fund are capital in nature, not really operating. And so it's, we can't really assume those. But we, Parks does go after everything that they can get their hands on.
Okay.
Yeah. The only change for the Parks Fund since 2017 was an additional request for temporary wages to support festivals. That's at about $15,000 per year, and that is included in the model that you just saw. Everything else has stayed the same?
Quick question, Brian.
Absolutely.
Before we move off of Parks, is the Arts and Cultural Commission, do they reside under Parks?
They do not.
Is that that group? Where does that group sit? Do we know?
The Arts and Cultural Commission is managed by the City Manager's Office.
Okay.
The operating dollars are in the City Manager's Office. If you're, if you're asking about the, the $50,000 a year we set aside for,
Right.
for both acquisition of, of public art and maintenance of public art, that's programmed in our CIP.
Okay, so we can discuss that in CIP. All right, thanks.
The next two funds we're going to discuss are the tax increment funds. As you look at the fund, the original tax increment fund, they have a very healthy fund balance, approximately 6.7 million dollars. Two items to note that have changed since the last time council has seen this. Number one, we moved the cost for the Delta Station out of this fund and paid for them out of one-time funds generated in the general fund. What we have not added to this is the additional police officers that are going to be needed to fully fund the Delta Station. Originally, those were budgeted in 2018. The chief and his staff has moved those to 2019 to better represent when that need will exist. We will update this model as part of our 2019-2020 budget process and include those positions. Approximately 10 additional officers are going to be needed, split between the 21 and the 0.25 fund coming up. On average, each one of those officers costs about a million dollars over a tenure period of time. And so as you can see, we can probably fund about six to seven positions out of this fund. And here in a couple of minutes, I'll show we can fund the additional police officers, approximately three out of the other fund. So we should be able to build the Delta Station and get enough officers hired, including the ones that we've hired the last few years, plus these 10 additional, to get it operational approximately 2020.
And Brian, can you remind us that when we did that change, it was for that purpose? We wanted the ongoing operating expense to be in these funds and the one-time expense to hit the general fund. That's why we made the change versus what we did in the past. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Just wanted to make sure we were reminded.
Yep. And so this is implementing that exact item. So that reflects what Mayor Pro Tem Pfeiffer just said?
I was trying not to get ahead of the slides.
And so to finish that conversation, here's the approximately 3.5 million dollars sitting in the 0.25 fund. And we'll be able to complete the hiring of those 10 additional officers. We are quite lucky as an organization to have that dedicated police tax that the citizens of Arvada voted for and enable us to push our policing services. The golf fund, as Gordon spoke a little bit about, we are looking at changing and redoing the consultant's estimates on what that fund will look like. Originally, it was proposed to open in the fall of 2017. But now we're opening probably January or February of 2018. And so we will need to update these. The tenure model you are looking at today includes the original assumptions. And so we will need to update this and present this to you during September's revision. We do feel comfortable that the golf operation will be able to pay for the debt service that it is taking on. One item to note, we do have the actual debt payments now adjusted and included in this tenure plan. The COP payment, which was approved by city council and funded in 2016, will start in 2019 in the golf fund. And then the internal loan from the wastewater fund and the payback will start in 2018. To show the hospitality fund, we just spoke a little bit about this. Currently, they are sitting on about $500,000 as their fund balance. Councilmember Ford, you asked where the dollars went for the past three years related to what used to go as a transfer to the Arvada Center. They currently sit in this fund. The thought process through that was this fund and the equipment that they have is getting very old, a little over 25 years for some of the pieces. And if they were going to continue their operations, they need to replace those. And so that, those dollars have been set aside so that when they need to replace a walk-in cooler, a grill, they will be able to use that fund balance. So that decision was made in 2014 and has continued today. There are no assumptions in this hospitality fund related to them moving from the Arvada Center. This is assuming that they are staying where they are and operating as they are today. So for water rates and wastewater rates, I'm stealing a little bit of Jim's thunder, but right now, he's estimating that he's going to need approximately a two and a half percent increase in both water and wastewater. Those are not included in any of the models I am showing you today. As you see, the water fund looks like they have approximately $43 million at the end of their tenure plan. Of that number, a little more than 36 million is in reserve for the gross reservoir project. And so if you remove those dollars, the water fund would be exactly at their goal in 2026.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Jones?
And this may be a better question for when Jim does this presentation, but what drives those two and a half percent increases? Because as I've been watching this over the last few years, it seems like there's about a two and a half percent increase every year. Is that, is that a pass-through from Denver Water or from other places and we're just passing those costs through? Or is there?
It's a combination of both. Predominantly, the past few years, the pass-through has been from Denver Water has caused the majority of that increase. Some of those dollars are related to just ongoing operational increases. But in the water fund, the majority increase for probably the last four years is all related to Denver Water.
Okay.
And then on the wastewater side, it's related to Metro.
I'll be sure to ask that question of Jim and make it way meaner. Just kidding.
Jim will show as part of his presentation what the increases are and what percent they are of the total.
Thank you.
Wastewater is currently sitting on about an $8 million fund balance at the end of 2026. They have some very large capital needs, but those needs do not come in play until about 2030. And so they're saving towards that. When they have to replace a trunk line, you're talking about literally millions and millions of dollars for them to do that. And so they are growing towards that. All of the excess in the wastewater fund is related to capital. They do not have any operating reserves currently sitting in the wastewater fund. And stormwater is doing just fine. The creation of the fund has done exactly what it was supposed to do, and we're looking at no increases moving forward. Couple more slides. One, we had presented to you last year some of our future strategic opportunities. The items in green are items that we feel like we have accomplished in this past year. The items in yellow are items that we're still working on. And you'll see one item in red, and that was somewhat of a joke, but the G-line is still coming online. We do feel very confident that we've accomplished everything the city of Arvada can do for that. And we're very hopeful that we'll see the G-line before the end of the year. You will see a couple of new items added to this. ADA compliance. City of Arvada, you have funded, city council funded some one-time dollars to do a study on ADA. We do feel like that study will show that we have some areas that we need to improve. And so we've put this on the list as an ongoing strategic need. And we will be talking about funding some of that need this fall. And you will also see under our demographics area homelessness. And we've continued that conversation throughout 2017, and this will be a hot topic as we move into 2018. The next few sides show some one-time dollars and what we've put them to use. So if you remember, as part of the strategic plan with the Delta Station, we still needed to fund an additional 1.5 million out of the 2017 one-time dollars. We do feel like we will have building revenues sufficient to fund that. We have needed to hire some contractors to help with our building inspections, and this is related to our hailstorm and all of our roofs. We are looking at finalizing a court remodel. So we funded the addition of a fourth window for our courts function. And we'll be looking at remodeling and making the rest of the court space much safer. Today, there's too many access points, and this is all part of that remodel. So we're looking for additional funds to finish that. We do have to fund a network logging tool. This is part of our PCI compliance and our CGIS compliance. And finally, two weeks ago, city council approved the FLAP grant, and we have $22,000 match to that. So approximately 1.8 million dollars have already been committed of our one-time funds. The next list are items that came out of our budget process this year, items that we will be bringing to city council for approval or at least consideration once we've closed our books on 2017. To make sure we have these dollars and to make sure they're in our pocket before we go. and to make sure they're in our pocket before we go spending. And again, you see ADA up here. We see some streets funding up here, items that hopefully City Council has been made aware of throughout this year. A big item to point out is taking advantage of fiber conduit, and this is to complete our backbone in the hopes that we can get fiber and redundant systems out to all of the different facilities in the city.
Seeing none. Thank you very much, Brian.
Okay, so we'll move quickly to our next presentation, which is on capital.
Thank you.
Take a stretch break. If you're ready.
All right, giddy up, Brian.
So one of the other areas that we would like to come to talk to City Council tonight is an update on our capital improvement plan. We do like to bring up the various areas that we get to support our different capital projects. We did add a couple of different lines to this since the last year, and that would be directly related to enterprise revenues and then some county shared dollars. Those are grants predominantly. We do see consistency with our funding from $98.101. That is our required 20% of the first cent to go to capital, and then state lottery money or conservation trust dollars, and you can see the different areas that these funding sources are being used.
And, and what was the impact fees? Or where does that coming from for transportation and parks? Is that from building?
Correct, predominantly from building.
And we collect impact fees on our trans, on our road systems?
We do. We did want to remind City Council of the projects that are currently being proposed for 2019 and 2020. Funding for the majority of these projects would come from a reauthorization of our sales and use tax debt. At the end of 2018, we will pay off our sales and use tax bonds, which will allow approximately $4.2 million to roll back into our CIP. These dollars can be used in multitude ways. One, we can reissue debt, and that is what our plan currently calls for. But council will have the option to do other items. You could cash finance. You could choose to put these dollars towards streets. That decision will need to be made by future councils, but if we're going to reissue debt, that's going to require a vote of the citizens, and we would probably propose that that vote happen in the fall of 2018 so that we can issue that debt in early 19. And so council needs to think about, or at least start this conversation in January at the retreat, about what we want to do moving forward with this available CIP dollars. Assistant CIP Committee asked City Council to reissue that debt and to do these projects. That is what the plan calls for today and what we will continue to do unless we get direction to do something different.
Yep, Mr. McGough?
Yes, could you remind us, or perhaps only I need the reminder, the currently planned project for 2020, the Yankee Doodle Outfall? I just don't remember what that is.
So the Yankee Doodle Outfall is related to a water project, correct? Stormwater, stormwater, thank you. Stormwater project, stormwater project.
Mr. McGough, that's a stormwater project. The outfall being we're, we're picking up water in the drainage way and then depositing downstream. Outfalls being a downstream point of, exit for the water from the storm sewer.
And is that, is that in west Arvada?
Yeah, yes, it is.
Yeah, okay. So, okay, I'm all set. Thank you.
Well, I noticed it's not on the CIP. Is, it was, is, is this something dealing with urban drainage?
It will be.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so would we get funds from them?
We'll apply for funds and see if we do. They have a certain amount of money every year that they grant, and we'll apply for funds for that year.
Okay, all right, thank you. Nancy Ford?
Sorry?
I just wanted to go back for a second to the impact fees. Do we do a, a study of those and our surrounding neighbors in terms of what they're charging for impact fees?
We do.
How often do we do that? Just curious.
My understanding is we do that annually.
Okay.
So do we also do the same categories of impact fees as our neighbors?
That I cannot answer.
I'd be curious what other fees are being charged by our neighbors. I know this becomes a very competitive market, but I'd be interested in those categories if we can get that.
Okay.
All right, I see no other questions. Go ahead, Brian.
This is a reflection of the dollars that are proposed to being spent in the 2018 capital improvement plan. The $54,000 represented at the Arvada Center is related to the Arts and Cultural Commission. Those are the dollars being set aside both for acquisition and maintenance.
Okay, so that was actually where I was going. He was reading my, so on the $54,000, that's an addition, right? This is not their balance. This is an addition of.
That is an annual.
So do we know where their balance sits right now, by any chance? Like $100,000? That's what I've been hearing. I'm trying to go by memory.
Well, you can get to us.
I think it's more than that. Okay, you can get to us a little later about that. Where, where my questions are going is, is we, the city owns a lot of art, and I just want to make sure that, that we have sufficient funds to take care of those assets that are now kind of falling under us versus it was kind of done with the Arvada Center, and-
Yes.
I think some of that's changed. Have we had a division of that art clarified with the, with the Arvada Center, or did we take it all?
Well, actually, we're in the process of doing that.
Oh, okay.
The, the art that's at the Arvada Center is essentially under the nonprofit. The art that's in the public is, is under the jurisdiction of the city.
Like squiggles and the dancing dancers outside, I'm talking like all those, those are ours to take, maintain. Is it called squiggles? I think it's called squiggles.
I believe, I'll have to check on squiggles. It's on the grounds of the Arvada Center, but the, certainly the public art in the building is under the jurisdiction of the Arvada Center.
Center, and they'll have to maintain that, obviously. Okay. Yeah, I'd just like to explore that a little bit more. You know, and then what's our plans for acquisition in the future? I mean, we were lucky enough to buy the red thing. I don't know what that red thing was called, but it became a very focal point or relationship to Arvada Center. Whenever everyone sees that, it's like it branded itself, right? And I think it was like scraping teeth to get enough money to pay for that, but hopefully we have some money towards acquisition in the future.
Yeah, so one of the things that the Arts and Cultural Commission is working on is a master plan, Arts, Arts Master Plan, and, and that Arts Master Plan will define a lot of the questions that you're asking Mayor Pro Tim Pfeifer. I don't know if it'll define everything, but certainly at the, at the point that they're ready, they're going to make a presentation to the council and, and, and let you know what, what, you know, how they're going to look at acquisition, maintenance and acquisition of public art.
Just trying to look at the survivability of that organization and their charter. And so they're working on that now. Okay, that's, that's an accurate statement, that, that plan? Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Pfeifer, Lisa Yagi has an answer to your question. $263,000 is current, is the current balance, including the 2017 contribution for art.
Okay, and do we have any forecast of their expenditures for maintenance? Not yet. That's probably what they're saving up for is maintenance. Okay, thanks.
As you can see from this, a majority of our capital dollars for 2018 are being spent on transportation, with the next largest dollars being spent on parks. As far as ongoing projects go, these are dollars that are put aside each and every year for things like long-life street markings, replacement of traffic signals, et cetera. So we have various funding sources or various funds that are created inside the CIP, and when a project becomes large enough, we get enough money, we then take the dollars from this ongoing bucket and put it towards a single project. In the parks area, that would be items like replacement of playground equipment or possibly a redo of a certain park, and you will see many of those happening over the next 10 years in our park system. And that's a repeat of what I just said. And then to break this out, the one-time related 2018 capital projects, 72nd and Indiana, Lydon Road, improvements to the Arvada Ridge Station, and then on the park side, the holistic health and fitness park right around the Arvada Ridge Station, and the Fitz Morris Park, master plan implementation.
Mr. Jones?
I bet that Mr. Manwaring can ask, wonder what question I'm going to ask. On the Lydon Road improvements, is that just the intersection of Quaker and 82nd, or is that from the end of the Lydon Rock Development to Indiana?
Yeah, they're gonna, they're working up there. It should be starting pretty soon up to Lydon Road. They won't take it from there, from-
Eastward, and fill in those sections in between with the impact fees that they're supplying.
So that, yeah, because they, they are beginning, well, they've got the signs out saying it's going to start, so through 2018 was when those improvements will be done along 82nd through to Lydon Road. Okay.
East of where? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the crossroads.
East, well, from the west end, well, really, it's from Quaker to Indiana.
To Indiana?
Yeah.
So east was from Indiana?
East from Quaker to Indiana.
Okay, I was thinking for some reason 93 in my head, so got it. Okay.
Thank you.
But I do have a question as well. So 72nd and Indiana, any luck with CDOT helping out? I don't know if we asked or did we just give up on that one?
No luck. They're so overworked at this point, or too many projects under play, they just haven't been able to help us. We're moving along much, much more quickly than we would with them.
Oh, absolutely. We're quicker than them. Did, by any chance, anything what Dr. Cog could do? Did we take any runs at Dr. Cog?
We tried in the past, but we didn't, we didn't get any in this case.
Am I allowed to stir it up? I'm looking to staff to see if there's any help with that.
Well, I'm, you know, if, if, if there's, if there's inquiries you want to make on our behalf for that, we'd be, that would be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, we've applied for it. It just didn't score high enough to meet the criteria.
I mean, we have to be careful, obviously, because we have to be objective, but I mean, I'll ask staff about it, because this is something that I think should rise to, to maybe the board's awareness, and who knows, maybe they'll, they'll throw something at it. Okay, no more questions, so go ahead, Brian.
This is a representation of the dollars that are proposed to be spent out of the three utilities funds. Further definition on what these projects are will come as part of Jim Sullivan's presentation on September the 18th. This is a slide that represents the citizen CIP proposal, and when in our current plan, each of these projects are funded, or if some of the projects, for example, the two grade separation studies, were not funded. Overall, each one of these items are funded anywhere from 2017 through 2024. Finally, to revisit some of the very large unfunded capital projects, street maintenance, as which we are making a dent in this one, sidewalk gaps and trail gaps, we have also started to make a dent in each one of these items, but overall, the funding for each one of these has not been identified and is not available at this time. And then two partially funded items related to council strategic priorities. One, the Delta Station. Now, we have identified the additional funding related to that. That will come out of our 2017 one-time items. We have not brought that to City Council for formal approval yet. And then items related to broadband and infrastructure, we have identified approximately $1 million towards that funding, but we do need additional resources, approximately $1.6 million, to complete the backbone. We have identified those resources, but again, have not brought them to City Council for approval. Next steps, just further discussion on the 18th if council desires, and then a final adoption during second reading of the budget.
Mr. Jones?
One question on the Delta Center. I know that there was some discussion there, and I think it's even written, about other satellite facilities for other city services. As we're going through the design of that piece of property, are we taking into consideration that additional, those additional city services there?
Uh, Councilmember Jones, are you talking about for the Delta Station?
Yes, sir.
On the, on the Delta Station, because we're going to be sharing that with the Fire Protection District, I don't believe any of the additional satellite facilities will be able to locate, be located there. However, we are looking at alternative locations for the other satellite facilities.
North of 86th?
Yes, well, yes.
Just somewhere worse, somewhere in the northwest part of Arvada?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Can I, can I piggyback on that question? Did we progress any conversations with the school district?
Uh, not at this time, but that's still open-
Still there?
For, for more discussion, absolutely, yeah, in terms of a joint, a shared facility with their bus maintenance facility and-
Well, yeah, you know, they were at one time thinking of maybe getting rid of that or swapping or doing something different.
Yes, I think that's still something for us to talk about with them.
Okay, all right. And that might solve also the parks as well. Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none.
Thank you.
You're done.
Thank you.
Mr. Devon? Brief update on projects.
Yes, actually, no updates at this time, other than we'll be bringing back additional presentations for you on the budget and also on the hospitality master plan and a future workshop.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Daley, do you have anything for us this evening? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you.